That's not a fault, my fault is leaving the Upsher County Commission to order. I will have a moment to sign my second prayer, thought about what we need. And approve minutes from our August 3rd, 2017 meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, uh, like saying. 9:15 scheduled to come with Dr. Josiah Reeve. Uh, reading signature of Green Bean Weekend 2017 confirmation preparing office. 10, 10 through 12, 2017 is Second Annual Green Bean and Voluntarism Weekend. Announcement of the upcoming Green Beans Show to be held at the Riverwalk on Saturday, August 12th at 9:80 a.m. 9:30, Corporal Charles C.D. Day. The third certificate of recognition in honor of being named West Virginia Prevention Resource Officer of the Year. At 9:45, Bernard Keating on behalf of the Mountain Lakes Preservation Alliance and Upsher Indivisible requesting a funding appropriation from the fiscal year 2018 budget for the upcoming watershed operation to be held on August 24th. Upsher Indivisible is partnered with West Virginia Rivers, Mountain Lakes Preservation Alliance, and Buck Down River Watershed Association on this event. Item for discussion, action, or approval. Discuss settlement options proposed by Apple Action Mainstream Services LLC for taxes owed for 2014, 2015, and 2016 as a result of a relief from the running assessment file of the Upsher County Assessor and approved by the Upsher County Commission during their regular scheduled meeting on July 27th, 2017. Have we heard back?
We believe a settlement proposal is forthcoming, however, Jordan, it hasn't been received. It was in port all day today, so I would ask you to give a light on this.
Do I have a motion to take?
Salute.
Second. Been moved and seconded on favor, signed by the same eye.
Aye.
Oath of no, the eyes have. Item two, review of loan proposal for the possible refinancing of the HBAC system located within the courthouse.
I have three proposals for you to review today. From Citizens Bank, West Virginia Bank, and First Community Bank. First Community Bank actually provided two different options. One was a fixed rate and one was an adjustable rate. I, because of the time that the adjustable rate was received last evening, I was not able to do those calculations. However, you'll see that the greatest savings is the First Community Bank fixed rate at 4.2%, which would equate to a savings of $28,611. And that includes your 1% penalty on your current loan and the closing costs with First Community Bank. Like I said, we did not get this proposal until late yesterday afternoon. I believe we could probably negotiate those closing costs, but I haven't had a chance to have that conversation with Mr. Ford at this time. Uh, one other option that I would like to research is federal U.S. EDA grants. I do have a call into Region 7's contact. I believe that normally that they finance new construction for economic development, however, I'm interested to see if they would provide a proposal for refinancing the HBAC system. I know their rates are normally around 3%, so it could be a major savings in comparison to the lipworts that you've been offering.
I think on new construction, they are 3%, so. I would suggest basically table this and see if she gets an answer back.
You have a motion?
That's a motion.
Second. Been moved and seconded on favor, signed by the same eye.
Aye.
Oath of no, the eyes have. I want to look back up the draft and approve for the minutes. Give approval for the minutes of August 3rd, 2017. Would you prefer to review, if any additions required? Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second. Been moved and seconded with approval for the minutes on favor, signed by the same eye.
Aye.
Oath of no, the eyes have. Item three, correspondence and software systems incorporated regarding changes in maintenance contact for maintenance. Review and approval of 2017, 2018 maintenance levels. This maintenance includes program updates, telephone support, and time spent recording data conversations, and other onsite tasks depending upon which level is requested for each system.
I have an in-lug with every office that's involved in this contract, and they would always keep their current maintenance level, which is reflected in this document.
Salute.
Second. Been moved and seconded on favor, signed by the same eye.
Aye.
Oath of no, the eyes have. Item four, correspondence from Greg Priestup, West Virginia University Extension Agent, on behalf of the Upsher County Community Education Outreach Service. CEOs requesting execution of courthouse classes called their annual mini fair on Friday, September 8th, 2017, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. A copy of the certificate of liability insurance will be provided to Carroll Wallace County Administrator prior to the event. Do I have a motion to approve?
Salute.
Second. Been moved and seconded on favor, signed by the same eye.
Aye.
Oath of no, the eyes have. Item five, approval of request for bids with minimum visa for bank applications for a police vehicle sedan. Sealed proposal must be received no later than 3:00 p.m. on August 30th, 2017 at the administrative annex located at 91 West Main Street, Suite 101. Proposal received by the deadline will be publicly open, reviewed and read aloud by the commission at 10:30 a.m. on Thursday, August 31st, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve?
Salute.
Second. Been moved and seconded on favor, signed by the same eye.
Aye.
Oath of no, the eyes have. Item six, approval of request and proposal for the replacement of portion of Upsher County courthouse and annex surveillance system and supporting equipment. A mandatory pre-bid conference will be held on Thursday, August 31st, 2017 at 1:00 p.m. Sealed bids must be received no later than 4:30 p.m. on September 20th, 2017 at the administrative back annex located at 91 West Main Street, Suite 101. Proposal received by the deadline will be publicly open, reviewed and read aloud by the commission at 9:15 a.m. on Thursday, September 21st, 2017.
Just to clarify, this probably, how do you think about the recent similar bid that you've done? And that was for the courthouse security grant last year, which funded new wide definition cameras for the judge's chambers. This will replace the majority of the other cameras on the site, including the courthouse and the courthouse annex that are legalized by official staff.
You need for higher resolution?
These are all high resolution as well, but they're not replacing the ones that you just replaced last year.
This is supported by the?
Court security.
Yes. Okay.
Salute.
Second. Been moved and seconded on favor, signed by the same eye.
Aye.
Oath of no, the eyes have. Item seven, request from Upsher County Clerk Carol J. Smith for the Sheriff of Upsher County to serve as administrator of the estate of Commissaryship deceased in accordance with Chapter 44, Article 1, Section 11 of the West Virginia Code. Do I have a motion to approve?
Salute.
Second. Been moved and seconded on favor, signed by the same eye.
Aye.
Oath of no. Item eight, request from Upsher County Clerk Carol J. Smith for the Sheriff of Upsher County to serve as administrator of the estate of Rodney Wayne Landis deceased in accordance with Chapter 44, Article 1, Section 11 of the West Virginia Code. Do I have a motion to approve?
Salute.
Second. Been moved and seconded on favor, signed by the same eye.
Aye.
Oath of no, the eyes have. Item nine, correspondence from Quayle A. Bennett, Deputy County Clerk, announcing her resignation from her full-time position effective August 4th, 2017. Item may lead to executive session for West Virginia Code six days, 9:08 a.m. Anybody wish to go into executive session? Do I have a motion to approve?
Salute.
Second. Been moved and seconded on favor, signed by the same eye.
Aye.
Oath of no, the eyes have. Item ten, correspondence from Carol J. Smith, Upsher County Clerk, requesting the change of employment status for Quayle A. Bennett from full-time import time, working an average of less than 12 hours per week, effective immediately, to help with upcoming scheduling, vacation, and training of her replacements. Do I have a motion to approve?
Salute.
Second. Been moved and seconded on favor, signed by the same eye.
Aye.
Oath of no, the eyes have. Item 11, approval of the advertisement job posting for a full-time deputy clerk, county clerk. Applications will be accepted by the clerk to do the closing business on September 8th, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve?
Salute.
Second. Been moved and seconded on favor, signed by the same eye.
Aye.
Oath of no, the eyes have. Item 12, approval of an advertising for job posting for a full-time executive director for the tri-county visitation exchange center. Applications will be accepted by the board until the position is filled. Do I have a motion to approve?
Salute.
Second. Been moved and seconded on favor, signed by the same eye.
Aye.
Oath of no, the eyes have. For your information, items. Item one, correspondence from Jason Westphal, Upsher County Youth Baseball President, expressing appreciation for the utilization of the wellness complex property located off the Russell Ford Road, and regretfully announcing the termination of their lease of the property due to its location within the flood zone.
How about an accurate determination?
Do I have a motion to approve?
Salute.
Second. Been moved and seconded on favor, signed by the same eye.
Aye.
Oath of no, the eyes have. Item two, correspondence from Mexico Corporation providing notice of blasting activities in accordance with all state and federal laws, and as approved by the Department of Environmental Protection commencing August 23rd, 2017, and continuing through August 24th, 2018, from sunrise to sunset. Do I have a motion to approve?
I don't think they know that number, but it's just an address.
Item three, correspondence from James Jim Justice announcing the Community Corrections Program Grant Award for fiscal year 18 in the amount of $180,000. These funds will be utilized for the continued operation of a community corrections program in Upsher and Lewis Counties. Is that being approved?
Yes.
Is that same amount or?
It's the same amount as they were awarded last year, but it's much less than what they requested. They have submitted a revised budget in accordance with the $180,000 award.
Item four, newsletters and or event notifications. Item five, agendas and or notice of meetings. Six meeting minutes, seven meetings. Eight, appointments needed are upcoming.
You just want to read those out so people can go watching out of their interest.
Westmont High Resource Conservation and Development Council two-year term, commission representative, Upsher County and the Upsher County Fire Board community representative from 3rd list, June 30th, 2017.
So if anyone's interested in those positions, they can go by their administrative annex. We got it to the agenda for consideration.
Table writers, destroy your response from the center superior. Next meeting, Upsher County Commission, 17, 2017, 9:80 a.m., Upsher County Courthouse Saturday. The regular scheduled commission meeting on August 24th, 2017. How you still be here, Tom? I'm going to get to it. We now have a meeting with Dr. Josiah Reeve to sign.
Real important, having everything too serious. We look for a little bit of clarity. I have two bunch of beans today, which will make 100 pounds of beans plus the tubular to go to parish house, so to call them. This idea started from, uh, because it's at Charleston last year. We get man meal service, and they serve 400 people a day, 365 days a year. And every year they have a string bean contest. They said last year they got 800 pounds of beans contributed. So appreciate your contributions to the effort. My thought was that this would be a means to promote, uh, beans for the parish house. These would be frozen, you know, use them in the meals there. But also to promote volunteerism. I've given you a list of volunteers that I've been able to put together so far that is not complete, so if anybody has anything they can add to it, numbers or different organizations, I appreciate it. A couple of years ago, I tried to do this, identify about 2,000 volunteers in Upsher County. And I'm sure there must be at least a place that they.
Well, the scouts had some volunteers in Buck County this summer with the big jam.
Over here, yeah. I'm talking about local people.
Okay.
As, uh, Terry writ the proclamation. Saturday is a green bean stroll, and not anybody, everybody can come. If you need to come as a wheelbarrow, get somebody to push it, that'd be great. We have provided passes to people in Opportunity House and to parish house and to senior citizens to come without having to pay. But those five dollars a person for dang beans or two cans of beans will get you in. And the only goal is to finish one mile down the Riverwalk, so look for any and all of you that can be there.
So this is the one mile walk?
One mile, however you get there, roller skates, skateboards, wheelchair, stroller, anything works. Perhaps you've seen around or if you've been following the Green Bean Day at hotmail.com, there's a trace, uh, still has painted a bunch of rocks with beans on them that are activities, and they're stuck around the community. I don't know where they are, but if I find them, they're quick to up and post on Facebook. Very brave, it's been tremendous help, and trying to put this together this year. Just hope everybody had a little fun as well as get some beans from the parish house. It's, we had a, uh, asked for contributions in the way of work, and I had one here that's a lyric. I like to read for the paragraph or story. "Fanny's porch was just a stoop, but it had a roof to shed us from the sun, and a rambling red robe was graced beside it toward our house. In the evening, the shade there was perfect, as that air conditioning consisted of fan and alinda, and didn't give much on a humid July day. This would be the spot for stringing and snapping in the evening's preparations. Two metal chairs that took up long-term residence on the porch would be joined by one from around the kitchen table. Fans and pots filled laps with tass and pan that goes off." And in case you would forgive me, I will expose myself. Well, myself.
You got it first. You left the camera.
I think he's got a carry bean on there. Actually, you gotta turn around for Doc. He's got a, no, the other one. He's got a carry bean on there.
Yeah. That's the idea. Pretty good stroller, pretty good swat. And so if you guys are stringing beans there for gate, it's a good picture.
Sure will.
Do you want to be a picture?
Not necessarily.
Oh, you should be a picture.
Oh, you need to be.
And you need to remove your shirt, Doc.
Yeah, you need to have that totally.
I may have some on Green Bean Day.
So I gave the beans a bigger basket so that they could share. Get the beans out there where they can see them.
Oh, yeah, you guys have, is there string more before please?
It's a race here, and see if you can get the beans in first.
Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. Okay, you want me to take one with this picture or with this camera too?
One thing for stringing the beans, these aren't stringing very well.
This is the best coming.
Oh, by the way, that's a good one.
That's it.
That's special for Sam.
Okay, this is firm Dr. Reed, so.
Those are gift beans, Sam. The others are lost.
All right.
Sam, Sam, you got some.
Yeah.
Experience. Sam would have less experience than the other two gentlemen, so I gave him one for stringing.
That's a plus factor. Where are you?
Thank you, sir.
First time to you.
Oh, really?
They didn't take a look.
I never had.
You've been on those, you've been. You were. So thank you all.
Oh, thank you, Doc.
By the way, App Bush is going to create a can, string to snap today. App Bush is going to, uh, parish house with people that are taking advantage, will get the beans for advantage to snap. And I've taken two buckets, it'll be department to bake what they want to do. See, they're the ones who string, Sam.
Oh, I think it's all done.
Do you have a tree? I remember doing that.
Really?
At my grandparents, several years ago, they raised a big garden, and you came down to the garden and sit there for hours, you know, I mean, picking, they would can in the courtyard. And then it was extremely big.
I've been on that porch, you know.
Yeah, I want you to read the rest of the story, or you got business to do.
Quick for that part?
I never get over that door.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Bill. Late.
Thanks, Doctor Reed.
You're welcome.
Lookin' messy, three beans there, sir.
Special, County Commissioner just struck him, he snapped them. Don't get them nuts, same, same behind there or something.
That's what I'm actually stringing by.
Anyone care here?
It's my birthday, take a snap, guys, I want to.
I'm carrying that a lot.
How are you?
I'm not too bad.
You're probably getting tired of this, ain't you, CJ?
Pardon me?
Getting tired of all these things.
And you've been talking about this for a couple of years.
You beat a lot of people out, didn't you? Beat a lot of other places, almost pretending.
I told them, I went to Rotary the other day and presented my story. And I told them, here's, uh, App Bush's beans. When you get them snappin', I'll quit talking.
How fast did it take them to snap it before we went over?
Less than 10 minutes.
Really?
They're trying to, they're trying to cut down on the amount of time they give speakers, because, um, yeah, sometimes it ends up being like hour and a half before they actually get to there.
They don't all bring bushel beans, dude. Two of them saying, uh?
Yes.
Hi, Jack.
Have a good day. Hi, how you doing?
Good. Or CJ, Carol, how are you doing?
We got about three more minutes, CJ, Daniel.
Nice and built.
Yep.
Jack, I'm cold, you got that up there?
No, but you are, you are on channel three.
Don't wipe that shirt.
Carol, you ready to go back to school, CJ? Hi, Jay, yes.
You might, you have all your, your little.
Oh, my, that's my, never, this is a lesson, never put your back towards the door. How you doing?
Life's good.
I'm gonna stand up here for a second. I'll probably get some of that toast today, must have jammed, that's my thought. Got some of them on, just hanging out for the rest of the day, just taking. Yeah, should've been made better for eating.
Did you go to Stonewall Resort there last weekend? Did you go to Stonewall Resort last weekend? Had a nice car show there.
Clinic, clinic. And I didn't.
Had a pretty good band. I don't think I've ever heard anybody do all of that.
And I was a huge fan of Richard.
I'm just surprised you can scoot all the way to here, the place don't know what's there. I didn't even consider. Well.
It's nine forty. We have an appointment with Corporal Trowell, CJ, date the third. Preserving certificate of recognition, honor of being an English Indian intervention resource officer of the year. Congratulations, CJ. We're all proud of you. Good job. If you come up here, we'll bring you certificates. With that being said, you know, I mean, we was proud of you, you didn't have to run throughout the state, you know, I mean, we appreciate all you've done. We have sat there as commissioners and over the years, you know, I mean, we've had a board of education, I've had people out on the street. You make a big difference at the middle school. It is an honor to have you here today, it is an honor to give you this certificate of appreciation.
Congratulations, CJ. I work with you every now and then to the middle school and I know the kids, you know, they really respect you and you do an excellent job. Maybe on Rocky or.
And I would really like to shake your hand and I can get up from down here and come down there, you made a step up here, sir.
Yes.
Thanks for all you did, we definitely appreciate that. We'll sit down on this one.
Um, I don't want to have you presenting it to him, so, yeah, if you could just have Terry and then use the little closer. Sam, just a little closer. Oh, you know.
That makes a big difference.
Taking that off.
I thought that was all black.
Okay. All right, well, that's cute.
Sheriff, why don't you come on?
No, 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 this is CJ Day.
CJ Day Day.
I just want to say your bill for a minute.
You need to do up. Does it make you do up? Ben, I've been working with you over the years too, CJ, having been that.
He taught me everything I know.
I wouldn't go that far.
CJ, you put that on your application. Without you, you didn't put that on your application. No, I wouldn't.
Thanks, CJ.
Thank you, Sheriff. You're very welcome. And I appreciate you recognizing CJ for all his hard work and dedication.
Thank you.
And before I walk out on the journey, maybe later before you leave, that I can speak to you while we're walking, about what needs to be seen about.
Okay.
Okay, you both?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a night forty-five. Can we have some mention to further confirmation, the green bean confirmation? And let's see if we can get a, a part of a good mention.
Hello, second.
We do check all three groups right now.
Uh-huh.
Through the, I said.
I have a question.
That Thomas shared one. How old was he?
Um, I'm sorry, buddy, I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head.
Think he was in his forties, just beginning forties.
I'm negative.
I'm negative.
I have a question about the federal resource officer of the year, is there just like one throughout the county or like a state?
No, they're in, they're in the morning academy, they're going in the middle school and they're going in the high school.
Oh, okay.
CJ.
Oh, but it's only county not. No, the award is going to stay. It's going to stay, yeah. She's asking if there's an award that goes to every single county or, right? Like all the three at the school that, there's only one in the state.
Good morning, Mr. Hickman, how are you, sir?
I'm fine, you?
I'm fine, how was your fiftieth year?
My fiftieth high school reunion was terrific.
What is it like to go to a fifty-year reunion, I'm just wondering?
The way we do, we do everybody that graduated in the sixties. Because it was a small school. Anybody in, throughout those sixty to sixty-nine, welcome to come.
But, uh, Jim, Buddy's just asking about, oh, he's fifty.
He rest is, he's working on sixty.
You can take back your comeback.
I sort of remember.
Two thousand.
It was held in Dave U Delaware. So. Had a very nice time down there.
Is that where you are from, Delaware?
I, I just, I had a property down there, my parents lived there.
Did you fly down driving?
No, we drove down. About nine hours.
Yeah, when I was very, very well with Delaware, not too long ago, and it cost you a fortune through all the old roads to get there and back.
Well, the way, the way I come over is fifty-five to eighty-one, sixty-six, Wilson Bridge up to fifty, straight shot.
You don't go, like, say, towards Baltimore? That's why we go towards Baltimore.
No. No, I'd love going across the Wilson Bridge, it's just an engineering marvel. So it's like, you know, if in the world there were thought of putting a twelve-lane drawbridge there. You know, it's really, it's really something. But I got about eighty miles worth of road riding in my eyes down there, so. And it's a wonderful place to ride bicycle.
You have twelve lanes of traffic.
Twelve lanes of traffic, six on the east side. Yeah, it's amazing.
I'm gonna walk over to Carol's office and pick up some more fields and Debbie has.
Actually, no.
I probably have to say, Betty, I'll walk over and she's got some, I forgot what we had before this. Be all excuse me. Try, try too many out there.
Well, she was trying to, um. She was trying to get a dinner before she brought them up, because that's the process.
Next week, she usually will wait there.
Yeah. Well, because it's the purchasing part, the staple part of it.
Aren't you still tall?
Very bad, my, my.
You good? I'm good.
Nine eight, Saturday morning. What do they call them now, you know where they're?
No, I don't know.
I know, I don't know where they're going, have to run it.
I drive at least once.
It's Riverwalk.
Right.
Yeah.
That's a mile and a half around.
I can eat one right where you're going to actually go to start. I'm guessing maybe at the burger. That's not where people go out there or.
Nine o'clock, nine o'clock, sorry, sorry. I may have to do that.
You can't have beans, they're about to be, they're about to.
Well, I don't have a garden. I have to bring five of them.
Or some pants.
Two of them. I just want to make it there. Uh, don't, you don't.
Tell them, right. Turn.
It's nine forty-five, we have a meeting with Governor Keating on behalf of the Mountain Lakes Preservation Alliance and the Upsher Indivisible Requesting and Funding Appropriation from the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget for the upcoming water celebration to be held off March twenty-fourth, Upsher. Indivisible is partnered with West Virginia Rivers, Mountain Lakes Preservation and Buchanan River Watership Association on this event.
Commissioner Cuthbert, I have a verbal correction, thanks to decision that Mr. Keating is here on behalf of Mountain Lakes Preservation Alliance. Upsher Indivisible is not requesting any funding, so it's only the Mountain Lakes Preservation Alliance requesting a funding.
Thanks very much for agreeing. Your what?
Your request, yes.
This, you have before you, I guess, a copy of this request for funding for the celebration. You can see from this request that there are a number of groups that are posting or co-sponsoring the celebration, Mountain Lakes Preservation Alliance. The city of Buchanan has also been approached, West Virginia Rivers, the Buchanan River Watership Association, and Upsher Indivisible. This celebration, the purpose of the celebration is to raise awareness of the importance of clean water. You see before you the schedule of events, that are planned and a rationale. I'm not so sure whether I should read the rationale or. You see a list of identified expenses there. Now, Mountain Lakes Preservation Alliance is a group among several groups that is seeking this request for funding. Other groups on the list will actually make contributions to the celebration. The identified expenses there at the bottom add up to a hundred and fifty dollars. We are requesting that the, somewhere between three hundred and five hundred dollars for all of these expenses. The other monies will be collected from the other groups and also from the next step of our celebration. Is there anything else I can say here? Clarify this.
Appreciate what you all have done, for sure. And water, except for, I didn't have any water, so I know it's like not the habit of water, it's.
Well, this is essentially educational, providing honor event to get across to people the idea of the water. Well, this is essentially an educational kind of event to get across to people the idea of the importance of water.
Well, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I think we just need to, just so we explain it, um, we've had several groups come before us. Uh, Strawberry Festival, Air House, during budget hearings, and, and we did not allocate anything. We're still kind of, we find out where we're at, um, for this, this new year. So, we definitely want to be careful, um, you know, if this is something that is gonna be an annual event.
Well, um, I can't say that I know that, I, I think it depends a lot on how that goes this time. A lot of groups are trying to work together to put this thing on, or coming towards, um, obviously successful. But I don't have the ability to advertise it and to get it to work. If it works well, then we will be in the, uh...
All right, so, do I have a motion?
I was, let me just say on behalf, I think it's outstanding what you're doing. And I wish you the best. We've had several different people in here asking for money. And with that being said, I'm not forgiving any money because this county has a few bills. Y'all may, that they need to address on loans. I'm trying to get the county to use the money they have to address and cut down some of the loans here. Cause I certainly, when I leave this county commission seat, I certainly don't want to leave this county in worse shape than it was when I came here, so. With that being said, I'm gonna make a motion to deny your request for the three to five hundred dollars. I want to congratulate you for coming before the commission. I think it's well worthwhile, but I have turned down everything that has came before me this year because I want to address bills that we could pay and cut down on what we're paying. So, my motion would be to deny your request for the three to five hundred dollars. Not that it's not worthwhile, it's just at this time, I, I think we should be addressing in-house instead of going next. That'd be my motion.
That's, you know, I'm saying.
How did they get a motion to deny, I don't believe.
Can I make a, a quick statement? I'll sign it for you there. Um, as a member of the Mountain Lakes Preservation Alliance, um, it doesn't have to be three to five hundred. It can be a hundred. It can be fifty. It's just as a participation for the county commission to be involved in our work. That we supply so much of ninety-eight percent of the people in this county get the water from the Buchanan River. I, that being said, I'm, I'm just, you know, as I said, it doesn't, whatever you feel is so you would like to participate in. Chip, just one important statement. If one of you would, or all three of you would like to come to this celebration and make a statement, you're certainly welcome to come.
Tim, I personally don't mind making a donation for myself, y'all may, a little donation to, but I just do not want...
We, we would accept your donation.
Yeah. I, I do not want to spend taxpayers' money here. Well, I think we should be addressing the bills, y'all may, here that we have. Y'all may, once you're paying, then we're not in any financial mindset, and I would like to be better, y'all may, than we are now.
Right.
So, I have no problem, y'all may, uh, if you want to stop mine, I'll add a little check to you, y'all may, whatever. I don't have a problem going, a check's not gonna be big, it's not gonna be three to five hundred dollars, but it will be a little something.
I, I appreciate that, buddy.
I'll just, y'all may, make a cash donation right now and, uh, be good with it, whatever y'all want.
And I'll back, buddy, I mean, I, like, I agree with him, just, I think if it turns into an annual event, maybe submit something.
If it does, and it produces what we expected to produce, there'll be other funding from other sources. Just to get the ball rolling this year, we felt it would be, um, possible just to come here and then ask you guys, since you are the county and we supply a lot of water. And what, you know, you don't go grow great tomatoes, you don't go grow great beans or corn without clean water.
I'd be, that'd be a help, yeah.
And I think all the county commissioners here, y'all may, we've seen several people come for us. It's just that sitting here as county commissioner, I would go ahead and address some of the notes we have and get them paid down, then make contributions at this time to different organizations.
Well, we'd accept whatever, uh, if you wanna give a personal level then.
All right. One, two, or three of you. We still have a motion on the floor, though. Do you want to send your motion?
You can just let it die.
Way to go, I can let it die, whatever. Still, you have a...
Motion, motion dies, go ahead, motion.
Suggest a left forward.
Uh, hold on. I would like to make a suggestion that we give them ten pool passes for door prices per hour that they want to use for the two thousand eighteen year.
Would that be too far out, uh, because this is now?
No, they could, they could use it for door prices for next year, even if the pool's funded this...
Well, that makes good, that's our big team. But would they be still, because I understand they don't know what they're gonna do next year, huh?
No, no. Give it to them this year for the year two thousand eighteen swim season.
I see where you're going, y'all may.
Yeah.
If that's something that you think would help you out, would be...
Anything at all. What are you looking?
To move?
We're moving second, and we're giving them ten, uh, pool passes for the year two thousand eighteen swim season. I'll play a shake-bop saying aye.
Aye.
If you do that, the ayes have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hang on just a minute, I think you're gonna get a little donation from the commissioners here.
I know that's not much, I won't get you home, sorry, I won't get you home, please, sir. No, neither, sir. You have a good day, thank you.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Tim.
Yep, thank you, appreciate it. Uh, and I do hope one of you or all of you of you would like to come to the celebration. Or you'd like to make a statement, just, you know, didn't touch it any, fool, myself.
Yeah, y'all may talk to you. I've got a way, that's, that's two or four hours. My, my, my schedule changes, uh, soon as I get off my vacation.
Uh, but, uh, the happiest you can have is here.
That's all, Thursday, yeah.
Okay, from the twenty-fourth, what's the fourth time?
Uh, Chip, what's, uh, what time we start from?
Uh, start at four thirty. Well, actually, five, five thirty. Five thirty.
Five thirty, you're on the law.
Yeah, um...
No, if, in the case of rain, it would be in the green room.
It's the green room. Don't pick up a jerk, Chip.
Yeah, there's a case, check the...
Thank you on the website.
Then, thank you, to have all the scheduled events, it's on there, come to the back, it's on.